Yeah, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll do a roll call attendance. Jasmine Whedon.
Yeah.
Vance Pickering.
Here.
Joe Bossy.
Yep.
Jay Dugay.
Here.
Tammy Hamm is unable to make it tonight. And Brian Angelone, are you on? Does not look like Brian's here. And I just realized, Judy, I do not have the language, the RSA language. Do you have that for virtual meetings? And if you do, could you just read it?
I don't, I don't have it. Deb, do you have it on your thing?
I'll say contemporaneously.
Okay, I didn't want to say that word.
You can say simultaneously. It's a lot easier. I don't know why they have to use that word.
I don't, Sharon, do you have it?
Nobody talks like that.
I do have it.
Sharon has it.
Okay, you're on Sharon.
Due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, pursuant to executive order 2020 oh four under RSA 91 dash A, this public school board here meeting is authorized to be held electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen con- contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the school board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the hearing, the meeting, though this through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously participate by clicking on the following website address. WWW dot Lincoln Lynn dash wood dot org slash meetings or by calling six four six eight seven six nine nine two three. That address again was WWW dot L I N dash W O O D dot org slash meetings. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for assessing the meeting, including how to assess the meeting using Zoom. Instructions have also been provided on the website WWW dot L I N dash W O O D dot org. If anybody has a problem assessing the meeting, please email S Holt at Lynn dash wood dot org or call six oh three seven four five two zero five one extension two one zero.
Thank you, Sharon. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of January 27th, 2021.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe Bossy. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
Aye.
Looks like Brian is present. Brian, we're voting on the minutes of January 27th, 2021.
Aye.
And I am also an aye. That motion carries. Next item is the approval of the bond hearing minutes of February 3rd, 2021.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Vance.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by stating aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
Aye.
Brian Angelone.
Aye.
I am also an aye. And that motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of February 10th, 2021.
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Corrections, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
Aye.
Brian Angelone.
Aye.
I am also an aye. And that motion carries unanimously. Next item is the approval of the minutes of February 17th, 2021.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Second? I'll make a, I'll second. Any corrections, concerns, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
He's muted.
You're muted, Jay. Thumbs up for aye.
Yeah, well, it wasn't letting me unmute for some reason.
Okay. Brian Angelone.
Aye.
I am also an aye. And that motion carries unanimously. Next item is correspondence. I have not received any. I don't know if you have any, Judy.
I just have that. And I'm sure all the board members have already received them, just to, I'm reminded that there were some notices sent out from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And just some trainings coming up. They usually do a lot of trainings in the spring, come spring with new board members, but the ones coming in March and April is one on the school board policy development. And then another one for meetings and non-meetings and public, non-public sessions. The others that are happening in May will be your new board member orientations and your public notices and meeting minutes and in collective bargaining. And we will be bargaining this, we will be negotiating this fall. So, and that's another one the board can be thinking about in the back of their minds.
Okay. That's for the support staff?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any talk, we also received, I think it's House Bill one regarding school choice. Is there any, any talk amongst the superintendents or around the state on how that's going to go?
Yeah, so far they've been turned down because the superintendents have been voting on them. And throughout the whole state. And the newest one is a 455, which is a bill that they, it's similar. They're all similar. They're
Same things, yeah.
They're all the same. Yeah, they're all the same thing. But they're trying to, you know, promote the school choice so that students can choose amongst the entire state where they want to go to school. So, we've been voting.
Deny them, correct? Schools can't deny.
Right, except that, you know, the school district pays the tuition to that school if they accept them. So, it's tricky. So that, you know, we're working on those as well. So far, they haven't moved forward.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the business administrators report. Debbie? Just the manifests and payroll, not payroll.
Yeah, this week is accounts payable.
Accounts payable, okay. Judy, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple of things I'll mention now. The rest are in the agenda. You have your superintendent eval processes in the packet. And the next meeting for the board will be April 7th.
Okay.
And the other notice that just came up is a vaccine clinic is being offered at the school on April 2nd. And that will be at 2:45. It's a Friday afternoon. And the Linwood ambulance is putting that on.
That's great.
And that will be for actually anyone who's involved with the school staff. The preschool, the volunteers, the subs, any, anyone that's, you know, that wants to have it can certainly go to that clinic. The more details to come as we, as we move forward. But right now, we just set it up literally yesterday. So, as time goes on, we'll have more information on that.
Okay, is that going to require a pre-registration? Do you know?
Yeah, I think people are going to have to fill out some forms somewhat. But we'll get that, we'll get that out to everybody prior to April 2nd.
Does that include school board too?
Yeah, school board too, yes. Absolutely, yeah.
I've already got mine. I was just curious if it included everybody, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that'll include the school board. Let's see, the other one was just the copy of the contract bid from Gold Eagle Contracting for the piping. And Mark will be able to get into that later when we talk about that in the agenda.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right, and just for board, for board members, you've got a copy of the evaluation. It's still a bit, we're still using the archaic form. And I think last year, we were waiting to see if we could get through the strategic planning process. So I'm not sure that we even went through a the process. I know we had it, we talked, but we didn't fill out any forms prior to. So if you guys could do that and maybe drop it off in a sealed envelope, maybe by the end of next week, so then I can try to put everything together succinctly, so that when we meet at our next board meeting, we can, we can discuss the feedback and move forward from there, if that sounds acceptable to everybody. That would be the 13th. Everybody's good with that? Yeah, okay. Quiet crew. Mark, principals report.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening, sorry. Just like to say, start off by saying, you know, I want to thank our staff and students again for just grinding through this year. I mean, we know there's challenges, but you know what? It seems like things are going really, really well. And knock on wood, right? Going really, really well. And, you know, I'm really proud of the way our staff has handled all this this year and students. You know, they really enjoyed their break, well-deserved break, I think. And the transition returning to school from the break has been nice, uneventful. Families, we did have to evict a family of squirrels from the library. You know, they had a lot of overdue books, and so they weren't willing to pay. They had to, they had to go. They took care of that. Want to say congratulations to the boys ski team for winning the state championship. They did a great job and the girls had a really good showing as well. I just love how they compete. They do a great job. And also winter sports, I feel like, you know, it was very successful having our kids indoors, playing against other teams, bringing kids, bringing parents into the stands towards the end. You know, I know they really, really enjoyed that, especially the parents of seniors. I think that was a good gesture on our behalf. They, you know, they had a very competitive season and we know it's a growing year. And I think great things will happen in the years to come. So we also have a bid out and Mark will talk about this too. We know we have some complaints about some tree removal. And so Mark has some bids out to get some of the trees removed on the property. We thought it was just one or two at a time, but you know, as people look through it, it, there's a substantial amount of trees that need to be removed in order to maintain that safety. Let's see, we have, we're prepping for New Hampshire SAS testing and SAT testing. SAT testing was pushed back. It was supposed to be this week. I think we made a good choice because, you know, just coming back from vacation, I don't think kids had time to kind of get into the momentum of testing. So that's going to be scheduled, rescheduled for the, I would say, March 24th. And we're looking to start testing on the New Hampshire SAS stuff. Probably around the first week in May for the middle school. The elementary school is still working out that schedule. The other thing that's going on is we have several administrators and teachers, counselors going through our Title IX training. You know, it was the policy that was adopted and put into play last year. And we kind of got to it around putting it into our policy around September. And I think that's a really good training. There's a lot to do. We dive deep into the policy itself and it covers roles, responsibilities, investigations, reporting. It's pretty intense. And so that's going to be a three day, pretty much a three day training. I think it's like four hours each day, but it's, but it's intense, but it was really good. And then interims, interim report cards are out. Sorry, interim progress reports are coming out at the end of, or this week. So they'll look to be sent home to families next week. So they're finished on Friday. And I think that's, that's kind of, that's kind of.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
Yeah, I do. This isn't really, this isn't really a question so much as it is. I've been watching a lot of these House Bill stuff and through a lot of these seminars. And I've been hearing a lot of testimony across the whole state from basically different schools. And I had no idea how much we were in the minority of going back to school full time in school. I just, I really, it's stunning to me how many people haven't gone back to school. And I personally wanted to say thank you to you, Mr. Prebenow, because I know you stuck your neck out. But I also want to say thank you to everybody, including the support staff, because it is absolutely amazing how much we stick out across the state as far as being back to school full time with our kids in that school. Just thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? All right, committees. I know Facilities hasn't met in, in a little while, so I'm not sure if there's any update there, Brian. I think we're just moving through to the, to the, to the district meeting and then making decisions following that. Policies did not meet tonight, but we do have second readings. So I didn't know if if there was anything, Jay, that you want to talk about regarding first readings that might be going on, or if we want to just move towards approving those second readings.
So I don't have any updates regarding any new policies coming through. We did get a big slate of additional policies that we had anticipated going over tonight, but due to unavailability of some of the members, we weren't able to. So there is a bunch of stuff coming, I think, but we just not quite in the pipeline yet. The new, the other stuff that's currently there, I was not present for the hearing for the meeting where that was discussed, Jasmine and Joe were, so that they may be able to better answer some questions if there is any regarding those policies that are on for second reading.
I discussed them.
Yeah, we had a pretty good conversation. And we've had, we've been sitting on them for a couple of weeks now, I think. So I'm going to make a motion and we'll get a second. And then if, if there's any discussion, we can have it and then we can move them if you guys are good with that.
Hmm.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve second readings J L C J, J C A, J L F, G B C D, E B B, G B C E, E B B B, B H E, E B.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Does anybody have any questions regarding those policies? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
Aye.
Brian Angelone.
Aye.
I am also an aye. And that motion passes unanimously. I'll also make a motion to withdraw the following. J E C, J L I, A D D.
I'll second.
Is that Brian? Is it, yeah. Thank you, Brian. Any questions regarding the withdrawal of those policies? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Jasmine Whedon.
Aye.
Vance Pickering.
Aye.
Joe Bossy.
Aye.
Jay Dugay.
Aye.
Brian Angelone.
Aye.
I am also an aye. And that motion carries unanimously. Was there any other committees that have met, any of the ad hoc or in between? I think we'll save Mark the bid for the piping project for, for the next, for the business requiring board action and move on from committees if everybody's good. Business requiring board action. We did receive a bid for the, the piping project. And I know that it was received this afternoon via email. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at it. I don't know, Mark, if you just want to, I think we all know what it says. We all know what it's going to do. I don't, I don't know if you want to give just a brief overview. There was only one bid that came in.
Yeah, basically, I just want to say, I reached out to Affordable Tank Company, Maine Boiler, Tanner Hill Construction, Gavtech, and Golden Eagle. Golden Eagle has the only one that's sent in the bid so far. I called Gavtech today and Gavtech says they still want to give a bid. They've just been behind. What I'd like to ask the board to do is if they would allow this superintendent to make a decision, because the bid comes in within the next week, I'd like to move forward with this project. And give this, obviously, give the superintendent the power to say, okay, yes, we're going to take this bid or we'll take the other bid. And I just want to know what the board's feelings on that is.
I am, I don't have a problem with that. The rest of the board needs to.
Yeah.
Well, you just want us to designate the superintendent to make the decision on competing bids if we receive them.
If we receive the second bid. And if we don't, we'll go forward with this bid. You know, to a certain amount, because I'd like to go forward, get this started as soon as possible.
Are we allowed to delegate under the policies, that sort of decision? I know that there's some, there are policies regarding who can make the decision about spending that kind of money, so.
All right, that's a good question.
Yeah, that is. I don't have the policy in front of me right now. But, but Mike, I just have a question is, are you looking at the fact that it could be, that amount could be different?
Well, I have a feeling with Gavtech's history, it's going to be a higher amount. But if it does come in lower than this amount, you know, why not go with a lower bid? Because this is all governed by the state. It's, you know, the engineers are going to overlook it. So it's apples to apples, no matter how you do it.
Did they give a timeframe on how long it would take to put the bid together, or they just say we're kind of behind, but we'd like to?
That's, they said probably within a week.
In a week.
Yeah, I just, you know, we do have one on the table. I don't want to hold this up. We got it. They didn't come in in the time I asked them to. You know, we could say just too bad.
So, Mark, we didn't get any bids before the January 8th deadline?
Correct.
So did we rebuild, did we repost it out after that or just reach out?
I just kept reaching out. A lot of, a lot of phone calls and everything else.
That was, that was my only question, because I realized, I saw the date on that bid was like 25th of February. So I know, I know that was after the date that the bid, the bids had closed.
Yes, yes.
So do we buy policy? Does anybody know? Do we have to rebid that out legally or?
No.
No, we don't.
Okay, that's it. That's the only question I had.
I mean, if
I must want.
I'm indifferent to waiting, or, or, you know, I yeah, what are they going to be able to do? I mean, are they going to be able to start if we wait? I mean, is this Eagle Mountain going to start next week or?
No, they won't be able to start until around the middle of April.
Well, we might as well take a bid if it comes in.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way I feel. And we have a meeting beginning April. And if we really needed to, we could call a 10-minute meeting just for this.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I would agree if they're not starting next week or something. Let's just wait.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. If you want to hear about the trees, I can tell you about the trees. Yeah, basically, we just, what's that?
I personally don't care about the trees.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I mean, you guys do what you got to do. I don't need, personally, unless anybody else wants to hear about the trees.
Yeah, no, they have to come down.
Take them down, that's it.
All right, all right, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. New business for future agenda consideration, the reschedule board organizational meeting.
Yeah, well, your reschedule meeting, just to let you know that that will happen on April 7th. So on April 7th, you're going to have your reorganizational meeting. You determine your committees, your, you know, and you set, you set up your board. Plus, we're also on that, at that meeting, which we don't usually do at this time, we will be doing the nominations as well.
Okay.
Because your second meeting is going to be after April 15th.
Sure.
And we can't have your first meeting because until April 7th, because your voting is on March 26th, then you have to wait 10 days after the voting in order
Yeah.
to have a board meeting.
That's fine.
So, you know, just to let you know that that, that's what we're going to have on the next agenda.
The next item was the superintendent evaluation. I think, you know, if you guys can get them in sealed by next Friday, I can, I can put everything together and then we can discuss it at our meeting on the 7th.
That's good.
Was that part of the, the board packet tonight? Because I've been looking through my email and I just can't see where I got that.
It was attached to, to one of the board packets that I got. I don't know if it was anything that was sent tonight or if it was sent with the original.
Okay.
That was. I think it was something that was sent this week.
The packet that she sent out on the 25th has everything included.
February 25th?
Yeah.
And if not, just if you don't have it, just reach out and Sharon can send it back out. Okay. And then the school year calendar for 2021, 22?
Yes, it was the last one sent, last version was sent out this afternoon.
Okay.
And so you just have to look that over and see what you think about it.
All right.
CBA has, has reviewed it, has given their input. And that's what we have.
Okay.
Did you want anything else, Mark? I didn't know, Mark Prebenow? No?
Okay. We could carry that over to the next. I haven't had a chance to look. It's not urgent, right, tonight? Okay. All right, continuing business, the district format, the visual, the virtual meetings, the Zoom format. So we're going to have a meeting on the 16th.
Correct.
Then we're going to have a meeting on the 18th.
Right.
With, with public input. Or are we? Walk us through it. Are we getting public input at the meeting? Or are we going to, we're going to get a post meeting or both?
You're going to have, you're, on the 16th, you're going to have, it's, it's going to be your school district meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. But we're not going to do a webinar. Deb, did you want to explain that?
Well, there's two different ways you can do a Zoom meeting. You could do a Zoom meeting, which I think most of us are familiar with, with, everyone's kind of all in one room and you see everyone. Right now, we have your school board meeting set up as a webinar. So when you look at your participants, you have panelists, everyone in the room here. And you have attendees, which is everyone in the public that can listen, but not necessarily participate. I mean, they can participate by raising their hands like we did through the budget hearing. But we're recommending that we do, and that's up to you really, but the Zoom meeting allows for more conversation. People, the people in the audience can't see who's here. And again, it's just, we have to, they have to raise their hand. We have to bring them into the room. So even if everyone's in the same room, we can still mute everyone and they can still raise their hand. But everyone can see each other kind of like at an annual meeting. Because it's a meeting for the public. But so we're just recommending that we set it up like a traditional Zoom meeting.
Which would mean that everybody could see each other.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, that's what I mean.
Okay.
The only issue that I have with that is we've had some difficulty in the past with making sure that all this technology is working.
Yeah.
Seems like, you know, is, does Zoom have the capability of having 200 people in the same Zoom room? I mean, that's sort of, we've had, we've had some difficulty, I know, conducting our meetings remotely with some of this stuff, so.
Yeah, well, we had problems last year, but now that we're all in Zoom, because last, before that, we were kind of in, in virtual, but in, in person too. But we have a license for over 100, we can have up to 500 people.
Okay.
Okay.
And so.
So we'll, we'll have the meeting on the 16th. We'll take the feedback from that meeting. Then there'll be an additional period for additional feedback from the community that we can take into consideration. We come back on the 18th. With that information that we, or the feedback that we receive, the board at that point can make any decisions regarding any of the warrant articles as we did last year, whether we wanted to table them or change them or amend them or anything like that. And then the ballot gets printed up and we vote, kind of deal? That's on that 26th or?
Correct. It'll be working on the 26th.
Okay.
And the first question on the ballot like last year will be if people agree to this process.
Yeah, accepting the format of the voting and that sort of thing. Okay.
Is Rob going to be present to? Okay, so he's going to be.
He'll moderate it just like a regular annual meeting. He'll go through each warrant article. There will be, you know, someone will present the warrant article. There will be discussion. Last year, we didn't have the discussion during the virtual sessions, but that the technology we had last year is not like it is now. And, and then, but we'll still allow for that public comment period between the meetings via email or
Okay.
Or phone.
Similar to the budget here, sessions, the budget meetings, we're going to have the, the functions where people can raise their hand and, okay.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, so then we're moving on to warrant article assignments. Okay, so then we're moving on to warrant article assignments. And I think the, the first one that will require someone to be assigned to it would be Article 7, which is the budget. I don't know if anybody want, oh. Sorry, Deb, will you tell me to hold on?
Sorry, Article, I meant Article 5. Which is the bond, the, the.
Oh, okay. Does anybody want to speak on the bond or answer questions on the bond?
That'd be the heat system?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if Brian has a, a attachment to that. You know, and he wants to do that, that I think that would make sense. I, I'll do it in the alternative, I would volunteer for that.
Brian, do you want it or you want to, you want Jay to have it? Doesn't matter.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I'll do it, either way.
We can give you some information.
Like we did in the past.
That we have.
And will there be information on this going out in packets to the public or not? No.
We, we can put it on the website. We're required on the House Bill 1129 to send out to every registered voter, the process that we're following for this meeting. But it will get quite expensive if we're, if we're sending out information in every warrant article, but we'll put it on the website.
Yeah, if we could create maybe a annual district page, much.
Yeah, yes.
And direct people in that communication that goes home to, to go here to, to gather more information.
And we can put information on each warrant article.
Okay, all right, Brian, so you have five. And then seven is the budget.
Isn't it the budget committee that will actually present that?
It will, but we, but we're not in agreement. So if there's questions, if there's questions regarding us not being in agreement, then we need to have somebody that's going to speak to them. I'm fine to do it. I, I don't mind doing it if, if. If you guys are okay with that.
I'd like you to do that, Matt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not really sure of the, all of the reasons. But I mean, if, if we want to come up with something, I have no problem speaking about it either, no worries.
Well, I, I think we just have to say that, you know, we handed them a budget and this is, you know, it was, it was this and.
Yeah, I mean, I voted on the school board's budget and I, I still support the school board's budget. So I have no problem saying that. But we just got to say why we, why we had the differences or just basically this is what we thought.
Yeah, I mean, we, we support, we have to speak to supporting the budget that we passed along to them. If, if it comes up, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about the budget. I'm not sure there, there'll be a lot of discussion and any further discussion, but who knows? But it's up to you guys, what, who you, who you want to do it. I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I want you to do it, Matt.
Yeah, I'd like you to do it, Matt.
Who is that?
Brian.
Oh.
Ryan and Jasmine.
I think it makes sense for Matt to do it only because.
The chair.
Since both parties disagree on the budget. I'm assuming the, the budget chair is going to speak on the budget committees' half behalf. So I think maybe our board chair should do the same.
That's fine, I'm fine with that, it doesn't matter.
I, I have no problem with that. Just normally, the, the person that was on the committee speaks on this stuff. But I have zero problem with that because I hate speaking publicly. So thank you, Matt.
No problem, it's, I don't mind doing, I'll take that one. Article 8, I talked, that's the collective bargaining agreement. I spoke with Tammy and she's, she's said that she would do that, as, as long as everybody's okay with that. Yeah, okay. Article 9, shall the district?
You don't need to discuss that.
Okay, we don't.
It's only if, it's only if eight fails, so you don't have to talk about that.
Article 10 is the roof. Is that correct? All right, somebody want to speak to the roof?
I don't mind doing that. I've been on Facilities for three or four years now and been on the board for quite a while. So it's the, the last piece and both parties agreed it should be done. So I don't think it's going to be a super big deal either way.
Okay. Everybody good with Vance doing the roof? Well, not doing the roof, I mean, speaking to the roof.
Oh, I thought he was doing the roof.
I wouldn't let him do the roof.
I'll do the roof, I'll do it for half what, what the quote is that we get from a professional crew. I might need your help, Matt.
Yeah.
I mean, we built a deck.
Yeah, we did build a deck, that's true. Article 11 is the Special Educational Cap, Capital Reserve Fund? Anybody want to speak to that? Jay?
Yeah, I think, so I was going to say, I mean, maybe it makes sense, I can do that and the, and the, all of the trust fund stuff.
Okay, you take, take Article 11, which is, and then go through with the rest of the trust funds?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the argument is essentially the same for, for, you know, funding all of those trust funds. It's, you know, the objection from the bu, the budget committee seems to be similar with respect to all of those trust funds. And so I think it makes sense to just address them. I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer for that.
Okay. So I think, does that take it all?
No, you have Article 18 and 19.
18 and 19, that's the land.
We're not weighing in on that, are we?
What's that?
We're not weighing in on that, right?
I don't know that we weigh in with an opinion, but I. Do we have to explain what it is?
I think you kind of have to give a brief explanation. Just so the public knows what they're voting on.
I'll do that too, Matt, if you want me to.
Man, Jay, I'm fired, kid.
Deb, is it possible for, you know, just sort of in preparation for the trust fund stuff, to get sort of an accounting of what we've spent in the trust funds for like?
Yeah.
At least a few years.
Yeah.
All right, can we go back to the beginning and say Jay will just take everything?
No.
And Jay, and, and Jay, that includes 18 and 19.
Right, the Lincoln and, yes.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like we're good with the warrant articles.
The only other thing normally at a meeting, if there's a petition warrant article, which there is this year.
Okay.
I'm, I think the moderator might ask for someone from the public to discuss that. Because this was, this is not a school board warrant article, but it has to be on our warrant because it was brought by petition to the school board. So I'm not sure, I, I'm trying to remember in past years, people that have brought that article, talk about it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe ask Rob. I mean, I think whoever, whoever brought it forward or someone, if ever, whoever signature, somebody should probably speak to it.
Right, right.
And we'll get that process clarified before the meeting.
Right, and we don't, we obviously, we don't, we don't have to speak to it either way as a board or.
What if we want to?
Um, well, I guess you probably can if you want.
No, so are we going to plan on notifying the person who fought, who, who submitted it? That, you know, that, that Rob is going to give them an opportunity to essentially present the warrant article?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think we need to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Just give them a heads up so they're not, you know, caught on the word.
Yeah, and if they're not comfortable, or somebody needs to, somebody that's on that or somebody who spearheaded that should speak to it.
Right.
For sure, okay. All right, continuing business COVID-19, any updates there?
No, except for the, you know, the thing, the gathering that's happening on April 2nd. That was the newest COVID update.
Okay, which is awesome. All right, recognition of visitors and public participation, staff. Annie, do you have anything you want to share with the board?
Hi, can you hear me? Awesome. Okay, I do have quite a few things. So from Dory Whedon, she has some ELO news. So ELOs, experiential learning opportunities have been in full swing this year. Due to the generosity and time of our community partners, students have been able to continually attend their ELOs safely inside and outside of the school campus. Special shout outs to the following community partners this school year. Tim's White Mountain Garage near New England, New England Equine Rescue North. Mr. Daniel Adams works with students in media production. Mr. Webster works with students in coding. Ms. Frobe works with a student focusing on art murals. Mrs. Krill and Mr. Hagan work with a student focusing on religion and history. And last but not least, our very own Mr. Hood supports a student learning the trade of welding. Lynwood is special in the, in the fact that our own teachers and staff take time out of their schedules to work with students and help them develop an ELO. Thank you, community partners. We hope to gain even more members next school year. From Heather Krill and Jen Witcher. Britta Robinson won our school's Poetry Out Loud competition with Shannon Drappo as our second place alternate. She represented us virtually at the regional round over vacation and will represent our local school and Rotary at the regional Rotary competition held, held via Zoom on March 17th. March is also when we celebrate Read Across America, a literacy initiative to promote all the reasons why reading is good for our brains, hearts, and souls. From our very youngest to our oldest in our community. With the pandemic, we are unable to do our traditional book buddies between our middle, high school and elementary school. However, we are in the process of creating shared videos of our favorite stories as well as book reviews for our online Destiny library catalog to help others with selections. From Paula Hood. Dear board members, thank you for the amazing support you have shown our students, faculty, and staff during the recent budget hearings, meetings, battles, et cetera. While I strive to keep the focus on the students and to ignore the negativity and misinformation, I would be lying if I tried to say that what has taken place recently with the budget process and some of the comments that were made during different meetings were not hurtful and disheartening to hear. I appreciate all you have done and continue to do to stand up for us. This cannot be easy for you either, yet you continue to work for what is best for our entire school community. Thank you for all that you do, Paula Hood. From Faith Bossy and Lee Harrington and the Student Council. On the week before February vacation, high school students participated in a modified winter carnival with the theme board games. Freshmen had Hungry Hungry Hippo, sophomores had Clue, juniors had Candyland, and seniors had Monopoly. During the week, students worked on snow sculptures decorating the hallway and knew this year had a food drive competition. This year, we had to cut the games to only one day of activities. We added a few new events like cornhole lumberjack toss, pop-up art, and a food drive. We worked hard on making activities inside and outside socially distanced as not to have too many people in one spot. The week went very well and everyone seemed to enjoy the day. With the food pantry needing donations, the Student Council decided to add a food drive to this year's winter carnival and offer points, 175, 50, and 25, which gave the students motivation to bring in items. A total donation of 2,550 items were dropped off to the Lynwood Community Center on February 18th, making this a great success and bringing a high school community service into the winter carnival competition week. We would like to see this community service event to continue in the years to come. Overall, the students were excited that they were still able to have these games during these times. The senior class were the overall winners for the week. And that's all.
Thank you very much. I just, congratulations and good luck to, to both Britta and Shannon. Also, congratulations to, to Faith and Lee for finding the creativity to make sure that we still had, went to carnival, even if it didn't include everything from the past. But it, I'm sure it was, it took a lot of work. So thank you to you, to you, Faith and Lee for, for your efforts in making sure that that happened for our students. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, oh, public, I know that there's, it looks like there's two attendees. I don't know if they have their hands raised to speak or if you do, would like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing anything, Deb? No? If there's nothing, nothing more, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor, please signify by stating aye. Jasmine Whedon?
Aye.
Vance Pickering?
Aye.
Yo Bossy?
Aye.
Jay Dugay?
Aye.
Brian Angelo?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, and that is a unanimous motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.